Okay, I want to follow Hopkinton Town Council meeting of October 17th, 26 minutes of order with a moment of silent meditation and spiritual reflection.
My flag will be lifted to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for Richard Sanders, one nation under God, in the invisible of liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Approved Town Council meeting minutes of October 3rd, 2016. Accept the following monthly financial activity report. Town clerk approved refund as a result of escrow overpayment submitted by the tax collector.
I move.
Motion made in second. Any questions, Coach?
Uh, October 3rd, uh, we can pull those only because of Tom and I are actually...
Okay.
Your friend, your friend. Oh, I'm sorry, it was friend of me, sorry.
October 3rd, where you...
Okay, I approve, uh... It was some vacation. On the consent agenda, accept the following monthly financial activity report. Town clerk approved refund as a result of escrow overpayment submitted by the tax collector.
Second. Okay, motion made in second. Uh, any other questions, concerns? All those in favor?
I have.
Thank you.
Approved Town Council meeting minutes of October 3rd, 2016.
Second. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Obstain?
Obstain.
Obstain. Great, thank you. Um, first public forum, anyone out there wishing to be heard? This is a time to mention or talk about anything on the agenda, first public forum. Okay.
On the, uh, present, will be on the agenda?
Correct.
And do, is there a second public forum?
Yes.
Could you explain that process to Ms. Lewis here?
Sure. The first public forum is any, anything you want to talk about, comment on that's on the agenda. The last public forum is items that are not on the agenda, that you want to just bring up to the council's attention. Is that true? No, this is kind of...
That's a policy that changed, uh, in 2015.
So if you want to talk about the rise building, you need to talk now.
However, if they're part of the presentation, then they'll be able to speak with me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, very good, okay. Uh, next up, under my report, um, is the October 6th meeting of Beachwood Neighborhood Meeting regarding the detention ponds. Uh, myself, Bill, Sean, Jim, Tim, and Kevin went to, um, Beachwood Estates to address some of the detention pond issues. It was great. I, I think that they appreciated us meeting face to face and talking about the issues. Bill will get into it more under his report, but, uh, I, I think it still provides for cooperation at the town and, uh, and the, uh, issues over the, uh, homeowners association and the detention ponds and how we're going to get to that, uh, point where we're actually going to be able to maintain them. Um, so thank you all. Uh, next, uh, I'm with Bill, the town manager, please.
On the Beachwood Estates Residence Meeting, uh, just to be a step further, uh, the meeting was, uh, the intent of the meeting was to bring them up to date, uh, 36 residents on the future maintenance of three detention ponds.
Uh, yeah, not a lot.
Uh, I don't think so. Yeah, I don't think so.
Nice.
Uh-oh.
It's not now.
Oh. On the future maintenance of the detention ponds and subdivision and the documents relating to the, uh, town's legal, uh, access to maintain them. Meeting also served as an opportunity for them to ask questions about the proposed maintenance of the ponds. And pursuant to that meeting, solicitor's office reached out to certain properties who are, they have actually control over it now, and they were very amenable to, uh, working with the town and working with, uh, uh, the HOA, the homeowners association, to transfer control from them, uh, to the HOA, which is necessary because for the HOA to grant permission to the town for the easements and have the authority to transfer those easements to the town, um, they need that control authority. So it worked out pretty well, and it's still a working process this time. Waterline Review Committee meeting. We had what we think to be our last, uh, meeting for the Waterline Review Committee. They've really done an excellent job. Uh, basically, we went before them, hopefully will find a time to, uh, review all the documents, review the proposed ordinance, and get the green light to move forward. We were successful in doing that, and then last week we mailed letters to the 50 borderline users, uh, property owners notifying them that within the months of these, November and December, uh, we're going to be, uh, installing, removing the old meters, installing the new meters, uh, at no cost to the homeowners. So those letters went out. We already got three calls, uh, scheduling beginning in late October, and hopefully, uh, everybody will cooperate on a mutual date and time to remove the old ones and remove the new ones. And then July 1st, we'll switch that over to, the game plan is to switch it over to a quarterly billing period, which would be better for the people and the town, will improve the town's cash flow, and those bills will be all small. Uh, I'm also pleased to announce that during the last several weeks, the town has received some, uh, additional grants in addition to the $400,000 grant from D E M for Langwoodie Field and $100,000 grant from D E M, uh, for Land Trust. We received a $10,000 grant from Renata Foundation for the construction of a placebo with the Crandall House, and that was constructed and delivered on October 12th, especially thanks to, uh, Recreation Director Mary Sawyer for the work on the project. She really did a good job, and we included a color photograph of the placebo in the package. We also received, uh, two $25,000 grants from Renata EMA. The purpose was to hire an outside consultant to prepare emergency action plans for several high and significant hazards in Hopkinton, and a special thanks to, uh, EMA Director Ron McDonald for preparing and submitting this grant request. Well, he submitted this the last two or three years, and, uh, we finally got it this year. We also received a $25,000 grant from EMA to update the town's hazardous mitigation plan that's already almost five years old, and, uh, that, that grant request was, uh, thanks to, uh, Jim Lampier, Lampier, uh, for preparing and submitting that grant. We also got a grant for about $5,500 from Renata EMA to offset 50% of the cost of the $10,000 stipend for our EMA director. Uh, October 13th, I responded to work with the Lieutenant Governor Dan McKee and other several other residents and business owners and his staff as part of the Lieutenant Governor's 39 cups of coffee for the small business. He was very amenable, very reachable, and a lot of people had a lot of nice things to say about him. Lastly, uh, on October 13th, my assistant Courtney Highland and I met with Engineer Tony Nina and discussed the status of the town's wetlands permit application that's currently pending before Renata D E M regarding the possible future consolidation of offices and expansion of town hall. We were under a, a deadline to submit that paperwork, that application for the wetlands permit. We got that in on time, and, and now, uh, we're just negotiating with D E M, uh, so that they're satisfied, satisfied with the final results, but whatever happens, at least we're agreeing for the end.
Any questions for Bill?
Bill, as far as the detention ponds go, is it the town, or is it my understanding that the town is taking over the maintenance of these detention ponds, and are they completely throughout town that we're doing this? Or is it just Beachwood Estates?
No, it's, uh, throughout the complete town.
Okay. Does the planning board know that? And the zoning board know that we're going to be doing that? Because maybe if we do any other subdivisions, there may be, need to be provisions put in there.
Maybe the solicitor can ask a question?
Yeah, we, um, right now, we're just focusing on Beachwoods because it's kind of an unusual situation. There's three detention ponds there. Two of them are, uh, part of the open space owned by the residents, and the third one, 25% of it is common space owned by the residents, and one resident owns 75% of it. So that's the trickiest one to kind of maneuver around. We're trying to, um, look at a policy where the town takes responsibility for detention pond maintenance in a uniform way throughout the town. This is just like a first step toward that idea, uh, that we're, we're looking into and trying, and this happens to be the one that's more complicated because of that one, one homeowner's ownership of 75% of one of the detention ponds. But it's a situation where the Beachwoods, where the, um, the developer's involvement in the development is coming to an end. Uh, if the new homeowners association doesn't take over, uh, no one is going to be looking at any of this, uh, maintenance of detention ponds or similar type issues. So, um, the idea is to get these addressed for this development first, and then see where we are relative to other, uh, subdivisions and detention ponds throughout the town.
So what you're saying is this is something new that the town is just starting to do, is to take over these detention ponds?
Well, the town already is, is responsible for, for most of them, at least that's my understanding, and there's a couple of exceptions here, and, yeah, this, Beachwoods is a big chunk of it, uh, and then, you know, then we're going to look at the next one or two that might be involved. That's, it, the idea is to get this whole thing under, under control and subject to the same type of procedures because in the end, it's a, it's like a safety, parking safety issue.
Okay, I, I thought they belonged to the, uh...
The joint?
Yeah. I thought they were... Some groups within the, within the, uh, development that does a detention pond, I was under the understanding that it was the homeowners association's responsibility to maintain that. Now that the town's taking that over, I mean, that's just another burden on a, a highway partner.
Yeah, I think Tom, Nancy, quite a thing, you guys can correct me. Isn't it where the water runoff from a town road goes into some part of that storm drain?
Yeah.
And then, then it reverts to the town's responsibility? That's kind of ridiculous.
There's a subdivision regulation that, see, here's one of the problems. Back in the early 2000s, uh, there were not uniform, uh, policies in place as to who would be responsible for these detention ponds that handled the runoff of stormwater from public roads, town roads. Uh, so this one in particular, Beachwoods, um, as you, as you just suggested, uh, the private paperwork governing the law of that subdivision at that time called for the homeowners association to be responsible for the maintenance of the detention pond report, but that was actually contrary to the existing zoning regulations on public the town dating back to 1995. So we're in this situation now with Beachwoods where the developer is transitioning out, uh, no plans appeared, appeared, I'm using the past tense, to be in place to address, okay, if the homeowners association goes away because the developer controls it, now who's going to do the detention pond? There's no structure in place. So those are part of the complicating issues that prompted different people within the town, particularly, uh, Bill, Bill's office and Jim Lampier's office, and, and to some extent, the council, uh, president, to kind of start looking at this and see if we can solve or help address the problem before it becomes a crisis. So that's kind of what we're doing, and the focus is really has been just on Beachwoods now because that really has a lot of these tricky issues that need to be addressed. So that's kind of a long-winded answer to question.
But, Bill, I think it's also important, I agree with you, but I think it's also important to note that out of the 22 detention ponds, uh, in town, 16 of them are currently maintained by DPW, and we have, uh, we have easements on each one of those 16. We're just trying to level the playing field.
That's excellent. I think that's reasonable, too. I think it's better for health and safety and for consistency and efficiency, especially in case of stormwater runoff and major storms.
The reason I ask is because I was at the zoning board, the planning board meetings, and I, I heard this, and that's why I was just under the understanding that it was all taken care of by homeowners.
Okay.
I think you're right.
Yes, well...
Uh, Bill, and this is tricky. Uh, Lieutenant Governors, did they have a Bismarck? Did they? Do you know if they did? I, because I was talking to Colleen, Colleen West.
I'm not sure where Bismarck is.
Oh, no!
Tomorrow.
Oh, you're getting a Bismarck.
I don't want to be becoming a joke.
Do you know what a Bismarck is?
Wow, he's a healthy guy.
Well, that's okay.
That's what it is.
Tomorrow.
Like in the...
I'll grab him.
They're not, the first day is Sunday after we think Thursday. Ah.
I think the dietary, I think.
Yeah. They're like a raise for friendship. You got it? That's the problem.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else, Coach? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, next under all businesses is number one, RISE School Building Project Presentation. RISE School Building Committee, Lisa McElusso, the chairperson.
Hi, everyone. Students, I know we're all very familiar with it. But, uh, okay, that's why I'm not going to get into it. Hi, everyone. Again, okay, so, um, we're here to do a presentation for RISE. It's going to be our final presentation for the town councils prior to the referendum on November 8th. I'll also be doing a presentation for the school committee, but this will be, um, our last stop out at the town as part of our community information plan. Before I get started, I just wanted to introduce you to the building committee members present and express some thanks. Seems as if actually most of the audience is, uh, part of the RISE project, so, um, first, since this is my hometown, I saved this. I asked my husband and my kids and my mom to come, and I did that because I not only want my girls to see what it is to be part of civic leadership, but I wanted to thank them because as you and the council know, to be an active and invested member of local government, there's a lot of meetings and there's a lot of dedication, and, um, my mom and my husband and my kids have really sacrificed quite a bit the past year, um, as we've been studying this issue for the towns and the children, so I wanted to thank them, and as you can see, their faces are really hard to leave at night. But, so, thanks, uh, to my family. And then I want to introduce you to the building committee members present. Uh, we have Edis Aslav, um, we have Marie Glass, and also Fred Stanley. And these are the Hopkinton Building Committee members, uh, building committee members representing our town in Hopkinton, so, um, they felt really compelled to be here tonight as well. And also, a Hopkinton resident and, um, key member is our Special Education Advisory Council parent chair, which is Sarah Algeri, and she also is a member, uh, neighbor to us in here in Hopkinton. Okay. All right, so, next set of things, Town Council, Hopkinton Town Council. We have been so gracious, allowing me to come before you so many times around this issue. Um, so I'm going to tell you why I'm here today. So the reason we're here today is our, uh, we're at the stage in the building committee where we are on the community information and community action plan. So the idea now, as part of the building committee, our task is to make sure that accurate information is being shared, uh, with the three towns, with Hopkinton, and that we're getting that information out to everyone. So tonight, we make ourselves available to you to ensure that we've done our due diligence, ensuring that our legislative officials here in, in Hopkinton have all of the information you need, and I'm going to report some concerns that, um, some of your constituents have brought forward, and I have evidence for you to support, um, our position on that. So as part of our, uh, community information and communication plan, the UG committee, including all the members here, have been engaged in, open houses at all of the elementary schools, middle school, the high school, and our school. The three town councils, the superintendent's open forums, we've been working on print material and web-based information, all specifically to inform the voters of the information as we have studied it, as it's come forward, and to make sure that they can make the best informed choice possible on our program. So I'll just quickly go through, um, some points of history, though I know everyone here knows it well. I first came before you during, uh, the phase when we were in the task force. Um, the task force had concluded that shared exterior wall addition, uh, to CNS would be the most cost-effective way of providing an evidence facility for the RISE students, um, while also making sure they were unified with the campus aesthetically. Uh, and so that's the rendering we have here. So this is the recommendation that the task force made when we came to you, to ask for your support in forming a building committee to then carry out the recommendation to task force. So no surprises there, right? If that's what we ended up working on. So the building committee formed with unanimous, unanimous support from the three town councils, as well as the special meetings of the voters. And Hopkinton, we had, have a core of 25, and we nearly doubled that that night. Uh, we had nearly 50 people in the audience from Hopkinton, and they all unanimously supported, um, moving the building committee, uh, letting the building committee form and providing the building committee with, um, funds in order to distribute information to the public. So at that point, we came back to you. The three town council presidents worked so hard. Um, they were devoted to trying to make sure that prior to coming to you with the resolution to bring forward to the state, that we had an agreement with all three towns on how we would be paying for the share that the state was not going to pay for. Um, so again, all that work was done prior to coming to you, and gratefully, you unanimously supported us moving forward the state legislation. Senator Morgan is one of the people who sponsored the legislation up at the State House. Um, she, I was there, she stood, she spoke for it, um, and RISE viewed all of the data, all the circumstances, all the information, as well as the state, and they both simultaneously, on independent tracks, approved both the, uh, the schematics of the building and the funding while the State House was supporting, um, the bond to go to the voters. So that's where we are now. Any questions so far? You guys were involved, it's, it's, it's very few times. Okay. Everyone understands the financial impact of the trailers? I think, so we talked about that several times. I think that, um, although we all in our, most of us realize that there's an issue of equity for the students in the RISE facility, beyond that, there is some real issues with the tax base paying for leased trailers that are, um, falling apart. In fact, RISE named this project here number one in the state in terms of need based on the fact, yes, that it was inequitable to the surrounding buildings, but mostly to the point that it was a leased property for a permanent program, and for that reason, they're going to give us 61%. And I want to correct something that I've been saying. I've been using the word reimbursement, that RISE is going to reimburse us 61%. And actually, at the Richard Town Council meeting, I learned something new, or a better clarifying point, that it's a little bit better than a reimbursement, because a reimbursement seems to imply that we're going to pay the money and then get the money back from RISE. It's actually more of a cost share. So RISE is going to pay the 61% directly to the bondholder, and then we're going to pay the 39%. So I should have been using the word cost share all along, but reimbursement is the term that's used by the state as well. I just wanted to offer that clarification because I, I, that kind of even made things a bit more clear to me. At no point will we be having to wait for RISE to pay us back any monies. All right, so the lease ending on the trailers in the day of 2017. Um, as we know, there's no state reimbursement for those trailers, and at this point, they're costing about $110,000 a year. They'll cost much more if replaced. Uh, if the voters choose to approve question eight, um, it'll be roughly $5.2 million that was, the 61% cost share by RISE, and the three towns are going to share the remaining cost evenly. And again, thank you to the town council presidents for, um, working on that with us. Any questions on that? I'm going to do one for the audience, see if they don't know, okay? Should I already begin? Okay. All right.
Mr. Speaker.
Yeah.
So question nine is the total cost, which we can finish.
Question two.
So the bond, we cannot achieve $6 million, but RISE will reimburse us 61% of $5.2
million if the building committee intends, uh, financing the project at roughly $5.2 million.
Right, and what is the cost that the three towns will absorb?
Well, it's...
It's 300, I don't know, I know it's...
Are you asking me to find the 61%?
I'm asking you the difference.
Yeah, well, we're looking through this calculator, and it's a banker, so.
It's a little 2 million.
Yeah. Shouldn't say in 28...
2.28, thank you.
2028.
Okay. So, um, from our community meetings, we have, we've been, um, we've been going very, very well, the referendum, same town law support, but we've also received a lot of very good questions, and we've used that as an opportunity to make sure, again, that the community has important and accurate information. So one concern that has been voiced is about, um, the remediation of the oil loom that is under the middle school. So I'm going to speak about this briefly and provide some evidence, but I know that Chief Stanley, um, has some, um, information that he would like to share as well, so the middle has some, like, the work with the town. So as part of our community meetings, um, we learned that there were some constituents that were concerned that in a remediated oil spill, the south end of the building was going to pose an issue either for the building of the project or the project was going to disturb oil spill. So I presented to all of you in front, in front of your chairs, you have three items. You have an A by presentation by GZA, Geological Associates, um, so they're the ones that did the full report. The minutes from that meeting are also attached, where a member of the town council, um, specifically questioned whether or not this addition was going to affect the oil, and GZA in no uncertain terms made a very clear statement that there would be no impact whatsoever with this project. Um, in addition to that, you also have a statement from the architect who concurs with that based on their study. You also have a statement from D E M saying that they concur with GZA and GZA, um, that this will be absolutely no impact. Please keep in mind that both RISE and state legislators were made aware of this by the same concerning group, the St. 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 St., and both groups independently, based on their own ethics and needs, moved this forward with no concern whatsoever. As of today, October 17th, I have a new letter from D E M that was sent to me before I left work, and a new letter that was submitted to them on October 5th, 6th, from GZA with additional reporting, basically a condensed version of that PowerPoint presentation you have there, um, stating that there would be absolutely no impact, um, whatsoever with this addition. And D E M's statement today, October 17th, is that the department is satisfied with GZA remediation of petroleum contamination documented extensively in making U S T case, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. So my job is to make, to take a question from the town, take it seriously, study it, investigate it, and bring back accurate information. Um, I hope that you feel I made that.
So if I could, I'm not, I guess, aware of any oil thing, I'm not sure. I just look at the finances of the building project, so I guess, can we maybe just keep the, where this thing came from? How would it affect a building anyway? I guess I'm, I'd ask us the why. Oh.
So, um, yeah.
Has it still been remediated and all, it's all...
No. So, yeah.
So how does that, how does that affect the building?
It, so doesn't, so, um, there isn't, I don't think there's another source within the state that I can go to to...
Oh, no, no, I just, it's just brand new to me. I just didn't know it was an oil spill.
All right, so in, so sometime before 1999, there was a leak. Um, leak was discovered in 1999.
From where?
Um, the south end underneath the middle school.
The tank.
The tank.
The tank was leaking, yeah.
And, uh, Jane Daly, if you want to, does anything you want to add? I know Fred Stanley was here at that time, so that has been under strict supervision from D E M, of course, and GZA is the engineering firm that the district is hired to remediate this. It is nearly remediated. It looks like, I think, five years. It looks like the average of when it's going to be, um, possibly complete, last, based on this report. So that is flowing into the opposite end of the building, right? Flowing in the opposite direction of this, of this addition. So the addition is here, okay? And this is the auditorium, um, so there's the seats. So the middle school runs this way, so the oil spill is at that end, flowing in the other direction. There was an addition to the middle school much closer to this loom, and no concerns were voiced whatsoever. But there have been concerns, and even Senator Morgan, um, brought... And even Senator Morgan brought her, took the time to tour the RIDE's building a few weeks ago. She also heard this concern from the same group of people. She took it quite seriously. I commend her for that. She went to the RIDE's building, she toured the building, she met with the director, she asked the questions, she looked at the spacing. And hopefully, she too came away with the accurate, you know, accurate information. And I do appreciate you coming over for taking the time to do that as elected officials have really had to be. Okay. So I'm going to actually pass it to Fred Stanley and he can probably answer a few more questions.
Can I ask you a question before?
I'll say as long as you want.
My understanding, and I haven't had time to read what you handed out tonight, but my understanding is that there was, if I could say, well, I'm not environmentalist, you know, I don't have any degrees in that. But I understand this perhaps 20,000 gallons, they estimate, and it's quote, under the middle school, which is why the issue of where is that oil going? Which way is it flowing? Putting the building, are you going to dig into the dirt or not? And you've reassured us, and D E M was the agency that should have a problem with this. And I would think Fred would know a lot about that. So my understanding is that there is a bubble underneath and it's just, it's under the other, it is, they think, going to move to the south if it ever moves. And they're trying to, they've got dispersants in it that they use. And they get a certain amount, I don't know if it's every month, but they get a certain amount out of oil out of the ground and they can estimate what's left. But I got the impression that there was just this bubble under there that was pretty much not going anywhere, it just wanted to stay there. Is that your recollection?
So I would, again, the PowerPoint, I agree with you Sylvia, that neither of us, I think, are ones that can speak to that granular level of detail. But certainly, the PowerPoint from GZA, that was presented to the school committee and public in April. And then there's a copy there. I would defer to the experts, and if D E M and GZA say that it's not an issue, in their language, as an unofficial.
Yeah, I understand that.
I'm certainly not willing to interpret the.
Yeah, this building is not going, it's not going into the earth. It's going to be built on swat.
Correct. Right.
Let me go back a little ways. When you're talking about the plume, I was kind of a bit from the situation that if you win this on that since 1969, still a lot of history went in in the age. The plume went from mobile, went around a circle and took in, didn't get to the river before they caught it and they started to run it back. They threw the whole thing back. This situation over here, and we weren't really getting on it because it wasn't above Brown Lake, it was in Brown Lake. And the only thing that I was concerned about when I talked to them with wells and so forth, the Cheroa. I was informed at the time, just to give you some sense of direction, Switch Road runs south and north, the river runs east and west. Runs south and north, the school runs south and north. The leak was under south end of the school. And at the time, I was notified that the plume was headed towards south, would run towards 91 where the bomb fire station. I think they got in soon enough to keep that plume back. And I don't know if there's 20,000 gallons there now because they've been pumping it out for 20 years now. I wouldn't say there's 20,000 gallons. But the thing is, people concerned about it, we put three classrooms within 30 feet of this oil sack right now. They were just added a few years ago. And the big fact is, where is this? Why are these people complaining now? When the well wore up and supplied that school, two wells were drilled there in 1987. They were good wells, they were made so we could go out and fire it. Matter of fact, they were so good that the contractors had a fight there. Two inch and a half lines in the school flooded the school before it filled it. It was a tremendous amount of damage to the middle school. Those wells are on the northwest end of the school. Why aren't they complaining with the wells? Those same wells cover career and tech. Career and tech, if you remember, before that turned over to Cheroa, the state came to Cheroa and after you blew it, there was a swap off, the drinking water went over a well in the cellar or the basement at vocational school. It's now being used to keep the fire system pumped, I mean, the tanks, the 52,000 gallons of water we have in the ground. Keep it level all the time for laceration and minor testing. Anything other than that, we'd have to blow top it off, we'd have to run the tank. That well was used for that, drinking water supply both vocational school and the middle school. Where are these people? Now they're worried about this addition affecting the plume? We've got all these kids at that school drinking the water. And not one time have I seen Beanie or George or any of them coming out and saying, gee, we could misuse the wells. They're only worried about this because they can't win any other way. So now they're turning around and trying to say this plume is moving that way, which it isn't. So we've got all the letters in packs. They hope to support us and get away from some of these lies and falsehoods that get put out there. I've always represented this town and this town originally. And I still do, and I'm glad you could be on the committee.
Fred, I had a quick question for Fred.
Fred, Fred. Fred has a question.
I can.
Yeah, just a quick question.
How is Fred dropping the line?
The plume, I guess my question is, why can't, if they're taking it a little bit out of the town, why can't they just eat it all?
It's a system flaw. People are right for the building, it went in building right next to the mobile for years. And what they were doing is going to pull all that fuel back. And I guess it's probably easier with gasoline. Fortunately, it didn't get into the pond. It followed, we had all the geographic map showing where the ledgers were. And it didn't go towards the pond, it went the other way. Just caught canal park and swung around. As a matter of fact, I was on Terry, Perry, or even around 60 minutes.
So they have to do it a little bit at a time? They can't just do it all at once?
No, no, they have to do it as fast. And I would doubt if any 20,000 gallons, it might be the stuff that they're working with, so forth, and probably some of the soil down in this little town. As long as they've been pumping that out now, I doubt there's any 20,000 gallons of oil in the ground.
Fred, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't they pumping like green into the ground, which washes the stuff and then as they're pumping it, it allows it to separate, you know, be able to suck it out?
Yeah, what they did at Richmond, I can't tell you over there how they're doing for that kind of building, that building. But at Richmond, they brought it back, separated the water with the water back from the moment.
That's the way they were separating it out.
They didn't get oil put on the bottom water? And this is not just oil that's just, you know, as pure as it was. It's mixed with dispersants and it's got dirt and water in it and who knows what. But so when we say maybe there's 20,000 gallons, it's not pure oil leaked out, it's mixed with everything else.
It's probably soil and everything else, except for the combination.
Yeah, so just so, just so many people will know, and you'll know Fred, the complaints about the oil were, are complaints. And they're not, they're not, I didn't think, I didn't take it as they were spreading lies or anything. They had concerns, whoever brought it up had, had specific concerns. And D E M responded.
Yeah, well, I think their concerns should have been brought up years ago. It still first happened about where the wells are, especially even the wells at the high school. I mean, if it's going the other way, we're going to lose all the supply.
I'll tell you what the.
Common sense tells you it's going the opposite way. If it wasn't, we wouldn't have well water.
The chart, the last chart, that shows the amount of money that has been spent. I, no matter what, in 2010, they, they did go out to bid finally because originally it was an emergency and they treated this emergency and then they just kept having the same person do it. And then they went out to bid and they hired this GZA who's actually been able to take out gallons and get it out of the ground. So they're doing a good job. And as you can see, the costs are going way down from 181,000 one year down to 17,000. So that tells you the oil's gone.
I have a question. I think I'm missing something here. Correct me if I'm wrong, wouldn't the foundation of this new RIDE school building act as a cap for any oil or any problem we have underneath the building? So what's the, where's the complaint here? I mean, you could build it on top of a landfill if you wanted to, as long as the base, the foundation of the building acts as a cap. It's not like things are going to leak through concrete, I wouldn't say. Am I wrong here?
No, but I don't think you've got anywhere you want to do it. Well, it's going to be built right onto the auditorium in the building. It'll be attached to it. The only thing that we can do, it won't be accessed for the senior high kids to go over to the middle school. The foundation, I had to talk to, that was one first question I had. What kind of problems are we going to run into underneath the soil? Is there any piping in there and extirbing in there? Guaranteed at the time of the idea was nothing we had to worry about.
So basically, what we do is we're putting a cap on top of this oil spill area.
Well, I need to correct that.
The oil spill area is the other way.
This is absolutely nowhere near the oil spill area.
So where's the complaint? Why is anybody complaining about it?
What they're concerned about, the oil spill is in a bubble. It's held in that area. Their concern is that when you start disturbing the ground, it may pop that bubble.
But the bubble, the bubbles here, if there's ice stones there.
I'm just explaining, the water, their concern, that I know, speaking with individuals, is their concern that they would pop that bubble and there would be.
I never knew there was a plume, so.
It's not, no. Concern is not, it's not near where this is going to go.
We just built three classrooms right over that area.
Sir, you know, when someone says that, you know, this is what the council's for. I know, but it's in the council's for when someone says there's a problem. He said, no, it's not. It's just we built other classrooms. This is, if anything was going to occur, would occur then, then that's what you're supposed to do as counselors, is say, no, I'm sorry, I don't believe that's the truth. I will look into it, but I don't believe that has occurred nor shall it occur.
I'm not saying I agree with it. I'm just saying that I explained why, what my, oh, they had asked me.
Everybody has a right to their opinions and comments. And they bring up a concern, you've answered it.
So Lisa, thank you.
Yes.
They were the easy question.
Well, let me, I just wanted to wrap up that last answer. So you're asking really great questions about the build, the foundation. Our next little committee member will actually have our architects present. So I can, I guarantee you, I'll ask that question for you and get back to you with the answer. I, I think common sense to all of us is, well, first of all, they're saying it's not an issue, but yes, the caffeine theory. But I'll actually get like a proper, like GZA, KVA answer for you that I couldn't do as well. But then, just to recap, we, right with them, we're here has the engineering or the geological degrees to tear this apart. But GZA does. KVA, the Casualty Associates also has a stake in this and being accurate. RIDE, Assistant Jane Daly, Superintendent Jane Daly can say, we've turned in binders to RIDE, this thick for the application for this project. They're on this as well. They have their obligations to vet every piece of information. And the same individuals who are asking the questions, which they're certainly entitled to ask, has asked the same question to each of these groups and they've received the same answer. So they've definitely done their due diligence. So RIDE has said this is not, this is a non-issue. The state legislature, state legislators will also pose this question. They found the evidence from D E M to be sufficient and passed the bond. GZA, Sylvia Porteau, doing a great job. This is, this is their profession. This is not an issue. And I have a statement from D E M from this morning, October 17th, saying they're satisfied with GZA. I mean, that's what I think has accurate.
Easy question. Once it's completed, how many students are going to be utilizing the buildup of the buildings?
55 at this time, yeah, 55.
And what would be the capacity, you know, of the buildings? 100, whatever, throughout, high capacity?
So RIDE sets the capacity, the square footage, based on usage, based on student use. It could not exceed 70 students, though I've heard the superintendent and Director Garland say repeatedly to other town councils and community members that even 70 is not a comfortable fit for students that have these particular needs. So 70 would be the max, but it's unlikely that the district would quit 70 students.
I ask that because of course the towns grow. This town isn't what it was 20 years ago. So there may be more need for the classrooms and all that kind of stuff in the structure at some point 20 years from now or 15 years from now. I'm just wondering if you, if you have that capacity load, if you can expand to that point.
So RIDE approval is based on the special use of the needs of these particular students. Because remember, half of this program is for students that have IEPs that have particular disabilities. In this case, they're clinical mental health disabilities. So that, they're, it's not necessarily having additional space, it's more specialized use. In this case, there's actual clinical offices that are built in because of the supports and services the children need based on IEPs.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that don't, don't like we all of a sudden, we find that we need more space because we have a larger population in three towns and all of a sudden, we need, we need another classroom or two classrooms or something like that. I think the public would like to know that.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we're at 55 now, roughly half are students that are in the clinical program. The other half are in the alternative program. And there is room to grow based on, this is about 13,000.
That's what I need to know.
So I have a little bit of my call. Marie Glass and Edis Asloff, they're part of the building committee. So I just want to give them a moment to say something if they have blood. And then the two other questions will be over.
I would just like to say that I'm so thrilled to be involved in this project. And I think it will be such a tremendous act, you know, addition to our community. It is an acclaimed program throughout the state. The fact that we service the students who attend this program in-house, do not have to send them away from their homes or long bus rides and are able to take care of them here is huge. And I think it will only enhance our community to complete this building. So I commend you for your support and thank you very much. And can't wait to see if we build. Thank you.
I apologize, I apologize. I know you're hoping that you're ready, you're going to get what I'm going to give you.
Appreciate it. We expect nothing else from you.
I actually, this is very dear to my heart because I was employed at the RIDE school. I was also employed at the alternative school off campus. So I made the transition to campus. And it was a great thing for the kids that I had off campus to be able to go to school at the high school and take classes there or take classes at the career and tech school. When I was there, one of my career and tech students won the national award at the, in the carpentry program. And so it's a, this is a great program. And it really makes me sad when I hear people say that these children don't need to have anything else besides a trailer, which it is, it's just trailers. And I think it's a great thing that you supported it. And I hope that that support continues in my whole town.
Hi, this is the point for Sarah Alteria from Hopington. And I just wanted to say thank you for your continued support for this project. And going forward, it's an equality issue. These students deserve a building that's equitable. And which one is the one?
Do you have any other questions?
Like the first thing I said after our first meeting met, how would you want a name?
Oh.
I told that.
My beloved school committee, now I'm going to be the chair of the new school name committee.
First year.
Well, you know, I thought it was such a wonderful opportunity for someone else to do the, I mean, I've been to the town. It's better because of this, but, so that committee is starting. On the 25th, I have the first meeting for that. We're going to set some criteria and then we're going to. I'm sorry?
October?
Yes. No, but that, that's not, that was not a public meeting. You have to worry about that one. That's just where we're going to kind of set some general criteria for the school name. And then it's going to go out to the public. There's going to be.
Contest or something?
Not maybe, I'm sure it's a meet, it's just that. So there's going to be an email address where everyone can submit their, their ideas. And so the criteria, for example, you might determine that any name has to have the word Charo in it[1775.38] to make it unified to the other buildings, Tom. So something like that. So we're going to have some criteria, we haven't thought about that yet. Let's go, get everybody to meet. And then it'll go out to the public, and through that small committee, we'll submit some names to the school committee. That'll be fun. I'm looking forward to it. There's a member, a student from the Rise Building on it, a parent, a student, a parent, the director, school committee number. You still have your?
Oh, yeah, I still got it.
Okay, you're going to formally submit it to me?
Yes, I am.
Lisa, I'd like to thank all of you that worked on this, and you too, thank you very much. I have been at almost all the meetings, because I'm very interested in what's going to become of the Rise School and hopefully a new name. I think we all decided that would be a wonderful thing. But I really want to thank the Hopkinton committee members. They have been present consistently and effectively throughout the entire process. Of all the towns, you have been there all the time. And it is really, I really want to thank you for that, because it's a very big process, it's a very big project. And you have done a great job. I am very proud of Hopkinton's part of this. You've been great. And Fred, I'm so glad you were there too.
Lisa, the bond, what's the term of the bond?
I believe it's determined once it's approved.
Okay, yeah, true.
I've heard in 10 years, and then one answer is possibly 20 years, and financially it makes sense. You have expertise in that area. Yeah, but my understanding is that is determined at the time of referring in this past, because there, the group that does it puts bonds together across the state of the schools. To get the capping rate, correct, Miss Daly?
Okay. The only thing, I know Barry had given his presentation, the only thing I want to have you take away, at least from me anyways, in the presentation that Barry gave, you didn't, you gave an estimation of what our mill rate would be if this project goes through without debt service.
Yes.
He didn't give us any credit for the lease payments.
Right, it could be less.
Could be less. Well, I guess my takeaway to you is, I'd like to get dollar-for-dollar credit on the new building for the lease payments. Right now, it's about five cents on the mill rate for us. Next year, when the lease expires, it'll be 192, it'll be about eight and a half cents. So I'd like to get a dollar-for-dollar credit, just the takeaway.
Okay, so if, if I say Fred wants dollar-for-dollar credit, that's going to sum it up, like, someone else is going to know what that means.
Does the debt service on the lease payments give us credit for the?
Assistant Superintendent Jane Daly, did you hear that? Thank you all, from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, your whole license off J K.
Okay, next under rule business number two. Render a decision on the proposed digital sign ordinance, which is an amendment to Code of Ordinances, Chapter 134, Appendix A zoning, Section 27. Signs to add a proposed new section entitled Digital Sign Ordinance, which shall also include replacement language for Section T, introduced and sponsored by Council of Palvo, heard on September 19th, and, excuse me, October 3rd. The ordinance will establish definitions for digital signs, including definitions for light emitting diodes, organic light emitting diodes, monumental sign, freestanding sign, static message, and unit measurement of luminance. Replacement language for Section T will describe and define self-illuminated outdoor signs, billboards, and digital media displays, allowing the use of light emitting diodes or organic light emitting diodes panels. Collectively referred to in this subsection T as digital signs. Terms and conditions are met in the tier two. Section T will specify where they are allowed. Requires digital signs, display only static messages. Governance the size of the sign, its brightness, the size of the text or graphic. Addresses, display time, and list the colors. That will be allowed in specific zones, and colors to be used by specific agencies. All other sections of Chapter 134, Section 27, to remain in full force and effect. The amendment shall take effect immediately upon passage. Barbara, you have any comments on this?
I don't think I have anything to say.
Okay. Council of the Republicans, anybody want to start? I know we've come. No, I think I wanted to say this is, at least, prior to this, we never had a townwide ordinance regarding LEDs. Now we do, and it's just a first pass at it. So it's concerning between that as things progress. But I thank Barbara for getting a scuffle and getting it farmed.
We'll make a motion to affirm the proposed digital sign ordinance.
Go second. Motion in second. Any council questions, concerns? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Next on the new business, set hearing date regarding proposed town warline distribution system ordinance, introduced and sponsored by Sylvia Thompson.
Now that I think about it, we really don't have time for this council to vagarize and then render a decision at a later date. The timing is off because of the election.
Well, next meeting is November 1st.
I'm thinking that we can't actually, we can set a hearing date for after the election. You can do it that way, and then the new council would.
What's that, Susan, do we have enough time to set it prior to, or not?
It's not a normal ordinance. I checked with the school this evening. Because it's not an appetite, and it's only ordinance, it needs to be advertised at least once, five days before the day they announce. And I expect we'll get to November, the meeting's November 1st.
I think.
No, November 7th.
If we just doesn't have time to do it, we would do it, but I need to know.
But I think you would.
The night of the election, Halloween is that one?
Yeah. And also, I mean, I think it's important. I think what Sylvia brings forward is important. And if we hear it as a council, and then the council changes, then what we've done is internally effective. I would like to see it after the election, because I think it's very important for every person who is on the council after the election to see this in detail and look at it in detail.
Yeah, you can't have a hearing and then have the next council make a decision. It doesn't work.
And I think that it's important, in my opinion.
What would be the danger, Sylvia, for holding off on this?
Holding off is just because there isn't enough time, you know.
No, 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 I'm saying, is there any trouble with holding off?
No, not at all.
Okay.
No, that's fine.
True.
So we can set a hearing date for perhaps the first meeting December?
Second meeting.
Oh, first meeting December, that's. Yeah, because then they have, they get their packet, they look at it, we'll have the hearing.
So you're thinking maybe December 5th?
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what the council wants.
Okay. Oh, and by the, oh, any changes that I needed to make, just talk to John Bill about it. I don't need to do that now, because she's setting me up.
Yes, she's setting me up.
Just apply your little tweet, no big deal.
Okay, last call before we form. Motion ready?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.